Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September meeting of the Council Rock School District Board of School Directors. Dr. Senko, would you kick us off, please?
Thank you, Mr. Tate. Dylan D. Simone and Dar Mangala, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a rooting justice for all.
Please remain standing for our national anthem.
Thank you so much. We're going to perform one more patriotic selection. This is my country. Thank you, Mr. Burns and Council Rock High School South.
Very nicely done. Thank you very much. Welcome, everybody, again to members of the community, parents. Glad you're here. Nice to see you. To Council Rock teachers, staff, administrators, thank you for your great work and appreciate you being here tonight. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Horner?
Here.
Ms. Stone?
Here.
Ms. Khan?
Here.
Ms. Oseki?
Present.
Ms. Polly?
Present.
Mr. Hickey?
Here.
Mr. Roosevelt?
Here.
Mr. Hidalgo?
And Mr. Tate?
Present.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hidalgo is traveling on business. Dr. Senko, could we have the superintendent's report, please, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Tate. Welcome and good evening to the Board of School Directors, to the staff and community members joining us here tonight, and those tuning in on the Council Rock YouTube channel. Thank you to the Council Rock South drum majors, Dylan D. Simone and Dar Mangala, for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. And finally, thank you to the Council Rock High School South marching band led by Mr. John Burns for their musical performance tonight. The 2025-2026 school year is off to a strong and successful start. I'm pleased to share that every one of our buildings, classrooms, and facilities was fully prepared to welcome students on the very first day. On Labor Day, I personally visited each Council Rock property to ensure we were ready, and I can confidently say that our district began the year on the right foot. In the days that followed, central office administrators and I had the privilege of visiting classrooms across the district, and Mr. Ab joined me in taking a few bus rides as well. What we saw was inspiring, teachers filled with energy and dedication, students eager to learn, and schools alive with the spirit of possibility that comes with the new year. As we move through these first few weeks, I want to extend my sincere thanks to our parents and guardians in the community. Your encouragement at home and your partnership with our schools play an essential role in preparing students for success. Along with the dedication of our staff, the support of our families ensures that this year will be one of growth, achievement, and excellence for all Council Rock students. One of the most significant highlights of this school year's opening has been the very successful launch of Full Day Kindergarten in Council Rock. The thoughtful planning and preparation led by Ms. Nicole Crawford that went into this initiative were evident across every school in our district. Our kindergarten students have adjusted beautifully, engaging in new experiences such as steam special, navigating the cafeteria, and adapting to the rhythm of a full-day school day. This success reflects the shared commitment of the Council Rock community to provide our youngest learners with the strongest possible foundation. Thank you to the teachers, support staff, and administrators whose careful planning built an academically strong and developmentally appropriate program. And we especially would like to commend the school board for the vision in bringing Full Day Kindergarten to Council Rock. In Council Rock, we are fortunate to have an educational foundation that has the vision and foresight to support teachers who dare greatly. This year, CREF has funded close to $46,000 in innovative grants funded to teachers across our district, including programs like Accounting for Your Future, X-Tool Laser Cutters, and Advanced Robotics for our STEAM program. CREF has also very generously supported our Nights for Knowledge program with $50,000 in funding. CREF has funded forward-thinking initiatives throughout the district, and our students are the direct beneficiaries of their foresight and support. With us tonight, we have members of CREF's Executive Board, along with many grant recipients and principals from across the district. At this time, I would like to introduce CREF Executive Director, Mrs. Beth Ann Dobash, and CREF President, Ms. Jen Fanenstiel, to introduce this year's grant recipients. Ladies?
Thank you. Here we go. Thank you, Dr. Senko. Good evening, everyone. It's a privilege to stand before the Council Rock School Board, our 2025-2026 Innovative Learning Grant recipients, and the entire Council Rock community. Tonight, we celebrate the educators whose bold ideas transform learning for our students and the community that makes those ideas possible. This past year was a milestone for the Council Rock Education Foundation. Thanks to the generosity of our supporters and the leadership of this district, we created the largest give back in our history. That meant more grants, more programs, and more opportunities for students than ever before. What's remarkable isn't the size of the gift, it's the impact it creates in our classrooms. One of the clearest examples was Nights for Knowledge. This program meets students right where they are, inside their home schools, offering targeted after-school support in reading, math, and real-world skills. Because of your generosity, CREF contributed an additional $50,000 to expand this program, making it a lifeline for learners. Although we originally planned to announce that gift in May, power outages and scheduling pushed the celebration to tonight. In a way, that's fitting, because tonight we're seeing the full picture of what your support makes possible. And now, as we recognize this year's innovative learning grants, we're reminded that every one of these projects began with an educator who saw a need, imagined a solution, and worked to make it real. These grants aren't just about funding, they're about unlocking the potential of our teachers to create transformative learning experience for students. On behalf of CREF, thank you to our school board for your partnership, to our community for your support, and most of all, to our educators for your vision, expertise, and the relentless commitment to student success. Together, we're proving that when great ideas meet a supportive community, students thrive. Congratulations to this year's grant winners, and thank you for letting us be your partners in education. And now, it's my pleasure to introduce someone who champions this work at every level, the President of the CREF Board and the Grants Committee Chair, Jennifer Fanstiel.
Thank you, Beth Ann. I'm so excited to be here tonight to celebrate the grants that were written last year at the end of the year, and they're going to be implemented this year, and it's so exciting to see this happen in our schools. This year, 11 grants, we awarded 11 grants across the district in elementary, middle, and high school, and it covers multiple curricular areas. Together with the Council Rock School District, proud to support these inspiring ideas and help bring them to life. I also want to invite Tammy Gary up. She's going to help me hand out these certificates to the grant winners, and we'll grab a quick picture. And I'll give a brief, a very brief overview of what the grant project is, just so we know what the title means. So first up, we have Musical Storytellers. That is with Jessica Bishop and Sam Elbans. Unfortunately, Sam couldn't be here, but Jessica's here tonight, if she can come on up. The second-grade students at Hillcrest and Rice Town Elementary will explore music through literature, reading books about musicians, and creating musical pieces based on story elements such as plot and character. This thoughtful blend of literacy and the arts fosters creativity, builds essential skills, and provides a meaningful hands-on learning experience. Congrats, Jessica. Our next grant is Accounting for Our Future, which Dr. Senko mentioned. That was written by David Afflebaum, and unfortunately, he cannot be here tonight. His son is in kindergarten, it's his first back-to-school night, so he's very excited about that. But the Accounting for Our Futures is for the honors accounting students at Council Rock South, and they will use advanced materials from Brook Books to build and manage a fictional business from the ground up. Through this hands-on work with financial accounts and statement analysis, they'll gain practical skills and insights into the real business world. And our next one is Elizabeth Thomas, and she is not here either. She is also mentioned, the X-Tool Laser Cutter. It is at Council Rock South, and it blends modern technology with traditional jewelry and metalworking techniques. The hands-on experience will expand their creative potential, promote experimentation, and prepare them for a future in arts and technology. And next, we have Mobile Mindfulness, which we have some people here for, yay. Lissa Pilsett, who cannot be here, but Demi Pithis and Judah Silverman are here. This project at Richborough Elementary supports the Council Rock School District curriculum by aligning with the district's MTSS framework and addressing students' behavioral and emotional needs. It introduces school-wide accessible calming tools to promote self-regulation, helping students better manage emotions, engage in learning, and interact positively with peers and staff. Congrats. Our next award goes to Abani Kuran, who cannot be here as well. It's for a project called Pillars of Democracy. This is also supported through a generous donation to CREF from an alumni family, so we thank them. Council Rock North will host two traveling exhibitions called Who Can Vote: A Brief History of Voting Rights in the U.S. and World War II Voices of Service. These museum-quality exhibits will enhance our students' learning across Council Rock North, South, Newtown Middle, and Holland Middle Schools in the Social Sciences curriculum, so we got traveling cases too, so they can hit the road. Next, we have Creating Community in the Library, with an emphasis on R.A. This is Anne McKernan. Students at Holland Middle will benefit from hands-on activities using low-tech Makerspace tools that encourages creativity, problem-solving, critical thinking, and peer connections. Next, we have One Book, One School. This is a fan favorite for us. A lot of the schools have used on this in the past, and it really is a great project. Lynn Labarge, Beth Fox, Jane Bonargo, and Tara Wrigley are, some of them are here. This is a project where all the students, staff, and parents at Goodknow will take part in a school-wide exploration of the book Flora and Ulysses by Kate DiMakillo. Through creative activities and lessons, the staff will bring the book to life engaging in the engaging and meaningful ways for students. This initiative also supports the school's PBIS efforts by fostering a unified, positive learning community built around this shared experience. Next, we have Jen Sinisi with Variables in Action: Advanced Robotics in the STEAM Classroom. Sixth graders at Soul Fine Stone will integrate Hummingbird Robotics into their Foss Variables unit in the STEAM class. Students will explore scientific experimentation through hands-on engineering and coding. This is an engaging way to apply scientific concepts while building critical thinking, creativity, and problem-solving skills. They are really cool. I've seen them at another school, and I can't wait to see them at Soul Fine Stone. Next, we have Beautification Through Botany of Council Rock North. And Samantha Gillian and Tim Bob Gardner and Tim Bob, sorry, Bob Gardner could not stay, so Samantha will take his award. But this botany project brings together general and special education students to study plant science and create green spaces at Council Rock North, promoting environmental stewardship. Through teamwork and hands-on learning, students build academic, social, and vocational skills while fostering inclusion and shared responsibility across the school community. And last, we have Council Rock North Composer in Residence. This was written by Greg Bakuti, and he could not be here tonight because the football team is playing away. So Keith Rudak came to accept the award on his behalf. This project introduces a composer-in-residence program at Council Rock North and Newtown Middle School, where students will collaborate with a professional composer through rehearsals, workshops, and a final performance. It enhances the band curriculum by integrating composition, analysis, and performance while supporting district standards and music literacy. We're so excited for this one, too. Those are 11. Oh, I'm so sorry. I skipped one. Next, it is, let me find it real quick, so I can read what I wrote. Don't change this channel. You're watching WBC. I'm so sorry, Ashley. And Ashley Levy and Linda Wojan. Students at Marine Welch will receive Padcaster equipment to enhance the quality and reach of their morning news program. Beyond broadcasting, the Padcaster will support project-based learning in both gifted and general ed classrooms, fostering creativity and collaboration. This also aligns with the school's mission by promoting lifelong learning, public speaking, and hands-on exploration across all the grade levels. Thank you. I'm so sorry. So thank you again for your support at the school board and administration, and for all the teachers and staff that have written grants and won them. We're so excited. A real quick picture, and then we'll be out of your way.
Get in there.
Have a good night. Thank you, Mrs. Dobash and Mrs. Fanenstiel, and certainly thank you to CREF and our teachers and administrators and support staff that do all that work. At the start of each school year, Council Rock proudly partners with a charitable organization to raise awareness and rally support for our entire community. This year, we are honored to partner with the American Red Cross, a service organization founded in 1881 by Clara Barton. For generations, the Red Cross has symbolized the best of American generosity, responding first in times of crisis, from wildfires and floods to hurricanes and power outages. Perhaps most recognizable are the Red Cross blood drives, which provide the lifesaving gift of blood to people in need across the country. Here in Council Rock, we will support the Red Cross by hosting blood drives in our schools and facilities throughout this school year. If you're able to give, we encourage you to roll up your sleeve at one of these events. Next month, both Goodknow Elementary and Hillcrest Elementary will host blood drives on Wednesday, October 8th. Additional dates and times will be shared in the Rock Report. Your donation truly makes a difference, as the Red Cross reminds us, sleeves up, hearts open, all in. Together, we can ensure this vital organization continues to bring people hope and help to others when it is needed most. Some important dates to mark your calendar. Tuesday, September 23rd, and Wednesday, September 24th, Rosh Hashanah holiday, all schools are closed, offices are opened. Thursday, September 25th is an education committee meeting, 7:00 PM at the Chancellor Center. Thursday, October 2nd, Yom Kippur holiday, all schools are closed, offices are open. Thursday, October 23rd is a school board meeting, 7:00 PM at the Chancellor Center. Thursday, October 30th is an education committee meeting, excuse me, 7:00 PM at the Chancellor Center. Several posts containing misinformation, especially on Facebook, are circulating while individuals have the right to post content of their own choosing, unauthorized social media accounts using the Council Rock name can contain erroneous and inaccurate information and present opinions as fact. It is important to us that the information you receive and the sources you trust are rock-solid. To ensure accuracy, we issue this cautionary statement. For the most reliable, up-to-date information about our district, please use only Council Rock School District resources, websites, and official social media platforms. We urge the public to verify information on social media and be discerning in where they obtain information relating to Council Rock. If you question what you're seeing, need clarification, or want a reliable fact check, please contact the district directly. Our contact information is available on our website at www.crsd.org. That concludes the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Senko. Great that the school year got off to such a good start, and we appreciate the report. Next is the Solicitor's Report. We have this evening with us Shayna Bethala, who is substituting for Mr. Musso just this month. Do you have a report, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening to the Board, Superintendent Senko, members of the district, and members of the public. I have nothing to report for the public. We did provide our written report for the Board. I'd also like to notify the public that the Board has not met in an executive session since the last Board meeting.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is public comment. I have no one signed up for public comment on agenda items. Just a reminder, the first session of public comment during our monthly meeting is dedicated to agenda items, and the second session of public comment later in the meeting is devoted to non-agenda items. Is there anyone who wishes to comment on an agenda item? All right, then, we will move on to approval of minutes of the meeting of the Board on August 21st. Ms. Khan, would you make the motion, please?
Thank you. Good evening. I move to approve the minutes of the Board, let me restart that. I move to approve the minutes of the meeting of the School Board Directors held on August 21st, 2025.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments, questions? Mr. Roosevelt?
Thank you. I don't know if this is a technical thing, but I noticed that the link to the YouTube for previous meeting minutes for the June 19th meeting and the May 15th meeting seem to both point to a March 20th meeting incorrectly. So I don't know if that's a technical issue or something else, but these meetings are also published. You can still find them if you're looking for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roosevelt. Any other questions, comments, any objections? If not, please record. The motion is passing unanimously, Madam Secretary. Thank you. Next up is Education Committee. Is that Ms. Polly?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. There was no Education Committee meeting last month, actually, not the last couple of months.
Monday, October 20th, DiVale holiday, all schools closed, offices open. Thursday, October 23rd, is a school board meeting, 7:00 PM at the Chancellor Center. Thursday, October 30th, is an education committee meeting, excuse me, 7:00 PM at the Chancellor Several posts containing misinformation, especially on Facebook, are circulating while individuals, are circulating. While individuals have the right to post content of their own choosing, unauthorized social media accounts using the Council Rock name can contain erroneous and inaccurate information and present opinions as fact. It is important to us that the information you receive and the sources you trust are rock solid. To ensure accuracy, we issue this cautionary statement. For the most reliable, up-to-date information about our district, please use only Council Rock School District resources, websites, and official social media platforms. We urge the public to verify information on social media and be discerning in where they obtain information relating to Council Rock. If you question what you're seeing, need clarification, or want a reliable fact check, please contact the district directly. Our contact information is available on our website at www.crsd.org. That concludes the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Senko. Great that the school year got off to such a good start, and we appreciate the report. Next is the solicitor's report we have this evening with us, Shaina Bethala, who is substituting for Mr. Muso just this month. Do you have a report, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening to the Board, Superintendent Senko, members of the district, and members of the public. I have nothing to report for the public. We did provide our written report for the Board. I'd also like to notify the public that the Board has not met in an executive session since the last board meeting.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is public comment. I have no one signed up for public comment on agenda items. Just a reminder, the first session of public comment during our monthly meeting is dedicated to agenda items, and the second session of public comment later in the meeting is devoted to non-agenda items. Is there anyone who wishes to comment on an agenda item? All right, then we will move on to approval of minutes of the meeting of the Board on August 21st. Ms. Khan, would you make the motion, please?
Thank you. Good evening. I move to approve the minutes of the Board. Let me restart that. I move to approve the minutes of the meeting of the school board directors held on August 21st, 2025.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments, questions? Mr. Roosevelt?
Thank you. I don't know if this is a technical thing, but I noticed that the link to the YouTube for previous meeting minutes for the June 19th meeting and the May 15th meeting seem to both point to a March 20th meeting incorrectly. So I don't know if that's a technical issue or something else, but these meetings are also published. You can still find them if you're looking for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roosevelt. Any other questions, comments, any objections? If not, please record. The motion is passing unanimously, Madam Secretary. Thank you. Next up is Education Committee. Is that Ms. Polly?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. There was no education committee meeting last month, actually, not the last couple of months, or three months, but our administration, our teachers are very busy preparing for the school year, and I do need to tell you that we had two meetings, one in August and one in September, where we are preparing for the education committee meeting next Thursday. So there's so much going on. It's going to be a very long, but very exciting and productive meeting, and I just want to take the opportunity to advertise it quickly. Actually, it is on BroDuck, so you can see the agenda there, but I just want to invite people to attend that meeting. We will talk about the summer academy and all the wonderful things that happen over the summer. We'll talk about full-day kindergarten. Thank you, Mrs. Crawford, for rolling out the fantastic full-day kindergarten program. We will also discuss curriculum approval next Thursday. We'll talk about the PACE survey, the Pennsylvania Youth Survey, that is, I think goes out every couple of years. So Dr. Black will discuss a new wellness program that is for all our students, for all grades. There'll be discussion on dual enrollment, because some high school students can also get credit from some colleges. The high school schedule committee will give us an update. I know they met during the summer. They had discussed a lot, and they will come back and give us an update of what they have so far and how they are going to proceed next. We will continue presentations on cyberbullying, and this happened last year, but there will be happening more this year. And finally, I want to say that I'm super excited about the special education update that we will get. Dr. Oberman and his team have been extremely busy this summer. There's so many changes, so many wonderful things happening in special ed, and I want the public and our community to come and listen to all this, what happened during the summer and also the plans for next year. Like, we will continue a lot of the meetings. There'll be newsletters. There is a parent's guide. It's going to be a lot, a lot happening, all good stuff in Council Rock. And also, we'll talk about something called Smart Social, which is a social media education for families. We'll talk about the artificial intelligence guidelines that Council Rock is going to advertise. The, I think Mrs. Magle, together with MIT, they've been working on this for quite a while now, I think over a year, right? And also, an AI tool that will be, is called Magic School. I think it's on the agenda also tonight, and this is for, designed for our teachers to roll out with our students. So it is amazing, all these things are happening in Council Rock as we continue being strong and providing educational excellence. So please come next Thursday at the education committee meeting. It's going to be a very productive and very good opportunity to know what is happening. Thank you. And with that, I move to approve consent agenda items B through L as contained in the attachments of this agenda.
Second. I spoke over you. Would you reread the motion, please, Ms. Polly?
It's not B through L?
Through L.
It is.
Oh. I said L.
Okay.
Okay.
It sounded like M.
Misunderstood.
That's why I said.
Okay. Now we have a second and a motion. Are there any comments or questions? Mr. Roosevelt?
Thank you very much. I see several settlement agreements here, along with a lot of other contracts, and some of this does deal with special education, as was mentioned in the committee report. I do have a couple of questions for Mr. Oberman on that topic. Could you briefly indicate what the current enrollment numbers for special education are and the costs of this education?
Sure. So, give or take a handful of students. Currently, we're at 1,739 special education students within the district, which is, if we want to look at that, you know, over the past three years, has been a slow but steady increase in terms of the number of students with IEPs.
And what about autism support numbers, if you have those ready?
Yes, so we're currently at 238 students who, you know, in our autistic support program. Last year, we were at 205. So in terms of, you asked about, you know, impact on cost, you know, there's a lot more guidelines when it comes to autistic support caseloads. We're limited to eight students per class. A lot of the students have, you know, a lot more needs, which sometimes require one-to-one service. So just an increase in special education numbers might not necessarily change things, but depending on the category and the needs of the students that cause the increase could have a significant increase, could have a change in how much we're actually spending for special education.
I appreciate this knowledge, especially understanding that you're relatively new to the district and you've been working diligently over the summer and are clearly hitting the ground running. That 238 number out of the 1739 number, are they included in that? In other words, is the 1739 including the 238?
It is.
Okay. So 1739 roughly is about 17% of our roughly 10,000 student body.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Additionally, I think that we were talking about costs. This may involve Mr. Spring, perhaps, but I'm not sure. There was a recent document that the Board was made privy to, that the Council Rock spends about $17,272 per pupil for regular education and $50,320 per pupil for special education for the '25-'26 school year, which, to your point, is understandable, as costs are going up, education is going up, special needs is important, and it's important that Council Rock deliver education for all students. Do we, are we able to diagnose earlier some sort of educational problems at an early age, kindergarten, third grade, or is this more of a fourth grade to sixth grade element where families are apprised if there's a potential for a learning?
I believe we do screeners as early as kindergarten in terms of trying to locate any possible reading or math deficiency with students. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that we immediately go to an evaluation and diagnose a student with a reading disability. A student in kindergarten or first grade hasn't had the, hasn't been in school that long to actually diagnose them with a learning disability, but that's where the interventions in the MTSS system kind of comes into play, where we're having tier one and tier two interventions with regular education teachers, and intervention is to kind of help, kind of build those skills prior to going to an evaluation.
Wonderful. And does this diagnoses and early intervention support include dyslexia?
So dyslexia, dyslexia and specific learning disability in reading are the same thing. So dyslexia is...
Is your microphone on?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is the yellow, is the green light on?
Yes. Can you hear me?
A little louder than kids.
Sorry. So in terms of dyslexia, it's, we have 13 categories to identify someone with special education needs. Dyslexia isn't one of them. So what we use instead of that is specific learning disability in reading. So those terms are interchangeable. So regardless if we use the term dyslexia or specific learning disability, we have interventions in place to address those deficits for students.
Has there been any changes in how dyslexia is identified within the school system within the past couple of years, perhaps?
The only, in terms of for Pennsylvania, the biggest changes I've seen in terms of dyslexia are the teacher preparation programs. So teachers going for elementary education certifications, there's a lot more focus in their studies in terms of the science of reading and the structured literacy, which is a term we hear quite a bit here, because a lot of our teachers are going through that structured literacy now. That's been the main focus from what I've seen in terms of, for Pennsylvania.
And the Board has also been provided some documentation of training for teachers upcoming, sort of a training schedule that includes significant hours in structured education. That's going towards some of these programs.
Correct. Letters is one of them. And just so we're clear, going into this school year, and I'll mention this more at the Education Committee, all of our elementary schools currently have Orton-Gillingham-based interventions, which is a big part of addressing those reading deficits. All the teachers have been trained on those programs directly, so I think we are in a good spot in terms of going into this year, in terms of addressing any reading concerns within the district.
Thank you. So we do have numerous families in the district that are in need of special education, and I'm sure in case of some of them, they've been continuing to need this and they're looking for, in some cases, more. So I appreciate the work that you've done, and I look forward to future recommendations on how we can improve the special education department from top to bottom, in and out. Thank you very much. Is this, is the sound?
Is Mr. Roosevelt going or Dr. Oberman?
Is the sound, perhaps?
Thank you, Dr. Senko. We'll look into it. Thank you. I think you just sort of got to lean into it, too, sometimes. We'll see if there's an issue. So we had, the motion is still on the floor, correct? Are there any more comments, questions, concerns about these agenda items? If there are no objections, please, Madam Secretary, record the motions as passing unanimously. And we'll move on with the report from the Bucks County IU representative, Ms. Oseki.
The IU met on September 16th, just this past Tuesday. We heard from the IU team about the start of their school year, particularly at the Bucks IU Lower South Early Learning Center, and we heard from their Leadership Development Program, in which leadership from 13 school districts in Bucks County can nominate deserving upcoming leaders in their own district to participate each year. Finally, we heard about a push for improved safety procedures throughout the IU's programs, including the introduction of a HeartSafe program similar to the one we pursued last year here in Council Rock. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, Ms. Oseki. And a report from the Middle Bucks Institute of Technology Representatives, that would be Ms. Horner.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Welcome back students, teachers, staff, administration, and parents to school year 2025-2026. Middle Bucks Institute of Technology is a career and technical education school for students in grades 10 through 12 from Council Rock, Centennial, Central Bucks, and New Hope, several private schools, and homeschoolers within these districts. Students have the opportunity in 21 career programs through hands-on, real-world training. Students have the opportunity to earn industry certificates and post secondary credits, giving them a head start on their career paths. MBIT Executive Council approved a five-year contract with Dr. Cavell, the administrative director. Dr. Cavell has placed MBIT on the map across the country. Dr. Cavell's passion and drive to deliver ambition at MBIT for every student to leave ready to contribute to their communities and careers. Dr. Cavell and the staff, teachers, and collaboration with the community have not gone unnoticed as they continue to get recognized on the national level. We are pleased Dr. Cavell has chosen to stay to lead MBIT into the future of CTE growth. MBIT Alumni Association kickoff event is October 8th. Please make sure to register at MBITEDFoundation.org. MBIT Fall Adult Education Registration is open, where there are adult evening classes, online courses, and custom industry training for employers. To register and see the full list of programs offered to MBIT, go to MBIT.org. These, those interested in visiting MBIT may come to the open house on November 20th, 2025, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Come explore the facility, connect with the instructors and staff, and engage with current students about their experience at MBIT. Thank you. That's all I have for MBIT tonight.
Thank you very much, Ms. Horner. And we have on the agenda a report from the Council Rock Education Foundation, which we already did have. I'll say simply, as the Board's liaison to Creff, that it was wonderful to celebrate the Foundation's great work. Thank you, everybody. Moving on, Policy Committee, Ms. Oseki, if you would, please.
Sure. I'm happy to. It's, you'll have to forgive me, this is a little lengthy. The Policy Committee met on September 8th. We had a lengthy agenda, which included second reads for the following policies. Policy 233, Suspension and Expulsion. Policy 234, Pregnant Parenting Married Students. Policy 235, Student Rights and Responsibilities. Policy 235.1, Surveys. Policy 236, Student Assistance Program. Policy 239, Foreign Exchange Students. Policy 247, Hazing. Policy 250, Student Recruitment. Policy 255, Educational Stability for Children in Foster Care. And we had first reads for the following policies. Policy 228, Student Government. Policy 229, Student Fundraising. Policy 230, Public Performances by Students. Policy 231, Social Events and Class Trips. And Policy 232, Student Involvement in Decision-Making. And with that, I move to approve consent agenda items B through O as contained in the attachment to this agenda.
Second.
There was a tie there. I'll give it to Mr. Hickey. And are there any comments, questions? We have a lot of policies in front of us, but they've been discussed extensively. Any comments, questions, objections? Anyone? All right. Hearing none, Madam Secretary, please record the motion as passing unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Oseki. Facilities Committee is next on the agenda. Ms. Horner, if you would, please.
Yes. Facilities Committee met last Thursday, 9/11. As I mentioned at the Facilities Committee meeting, I wanted to thank all the teachers, staff, administration, first responders, students, and community members for participating in the many events on 9/11 that were held across the district in remembrance of 9/11 we will never forget. Tonight, we are approving a new district mail van that travels across the district for delivering mail. The approval of ABM fees at Council Rock buildings for the fee of the use of facilities. Although I really hope for a mild winter, we are approving snow removal de-icing services and salt and de-icing material. The next facilities meeting will be October 9th. I move to approve items B through E as contained in the attachments to this agenda. Second.
We have a second. Any questions, comments, objections? Hearing none, please record this as passing unanimously, Madam Secretary. That takes us to Finance Committee. Ms. Oseki.
Okay. The Finance Committee met on September 11th to discuss three items. We had a presentation from Clifton Larson Allen about our audit, a presentation from Magic School AI about a proposed service for our teachers and students that will be voted on tonight, an agreement with the consultant to plan for sensory rooms at Richborough Elementary School and Soul Fine Stone School, Elementary School, and lastly, a renewed contract with DeNove and Associates. That's four things, I apologize. And so with that, I move to approve consent agenda items B through H as contained in the attachments to this agenda. Second.
Should it be B through I? Yeah, should it be B through I?
Yeah, I think that'll work.
I'm going to amend that.
Good.
I move to approve consent, because I's just, it's not included. I move to approve consent agenda items B through I as contained in the attachments to this agenda.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Khan. We have a second. Are there any comments? Are there any comments, questions? Mr. Roosevelt.
Sorry to be doing all the work here. I, yeah, I wanted to talk about Item E, Magic School AI Presentation. We had, this body had a very good, informative discussion at the committee meeting. I encourage all interested community members to go listen to that meeting, or at least where we discuss that part. And on that, I just kind of wanted to reiterate some of my concerns that I raised in there. I, I'm not going to oppose this item, I'm supporting this item, but I'm asking all administrators and all faculty and students to really look into this. I think this is something that needs to be watched, and I think it's something that the district has grown with over this past years as a pilot program, and I'm expecting that we can continue to refine it. And there were several questions that weren't answered from that session, not detracting from what the product is. I think Ms. Mangold addressed some of my questions well when she indicated that we need to get it in here so that we can study and work with it and help our students to teach them proper methods of using AI and good, the way to use it as a tool to get your work done instead of a tool to do your work, if that makes sense. I may have sort of abridged your comments a little bit, but I thought that was interesting. If we were to think about it with some other capacity, I don't want to list any, you know, you want to teach your children how to use it properly before just handing them whatever and having them head off. So, I think that is the spirit of this, and I, I want to keep it monitored closely to make sure. My sound just went off. My light's still on.
The microphone's...
I don't know if this is, no.
Not in person.
Yeah. Well, anyhow, that was, that was the point, that the administration keep an eye on this and try to improve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roosevelt. I think the volume for all of us went down. It's up to you.
Maybe my volume is up. So, Magic School is on the agenda of the Education Committee meeting? You can't hear it?
I can hear you, but they won't.
Can you hear me? No? All right. Okay, we'll wait then. Okay.
They seem to be having sound issues.
Technical difficulties. This one they put up on the screen.
That's right.
It's true.
We're gonna take a 10-minute recess while they reboot the amps. Did I get it right?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. 10 minutes. We're gonna take a 10-minute recess while they reboot the amps. Did I get it right?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. 10 minutes.
I hear all sorts of stuff. And it sounds like, Joe, it sounds like it's working now?
Check one, check one.
Uh, Mr. Roosevelt, would you check your mic, please?
Testing, 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 testing.
Very good.
Sounds like we're back.
And the back's working now?
Check one, check one, check one. Check one, check one, check one. Check one, two?
I'm sorry, that extension is invalid.
Check one, check one, check one.
Nothing?
Testing room two?
Testing, 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 testing. Testing. Can you hear me?
The speakers in the back, they can't get work. So I'll ask everybody on the other end.
But that's fine for online.
Yeah, yeah. They're getting the sound through the room. It's going on YouTube. Appears to be those two are back. The sound in this room has always been a problem.
Do you want to explain what's going on?
Check one, check one.
All right, everyone, I think we're ready to resume with, with a little bit of a complication that Dr. Senko will explain. Please.
Thanks, Mr. Tate. I actually, um, I'll give you a high-level overview and then I'll let Mr. Torriera explain. So we had one, part of our system go down. We can't get the speakers in the back of the room to work. So thank you to those of you who moved up. Our speakers are working. The sound is fine on YouTube. It's the speakers in the back that we're having trouble with. Joe, do you want to throw some technology terms into there or help me with that?
Andy, that was, that was a great explanation. I don't have much more to offer other than, yes, the team in the back is, is trying to get the back speakers to work. That's not, that's not working at all. But as, as Dr. Senko said, we're working on the YouTube feed. And if you do want to move up, please do so because you can hear pretty well up here.
And I apologize for the inconvenience. Mr. Tate, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Dr. Senko. So we still have a motion on the floor and Ms. Palli was beginning to comment. So, um, Ms. Palli, if you would.
Yes, I hope my mic works. So we're talking about Magic School AI, uh, which is on the finance, um, agenda for vote. But this is also going to be discussed at the Education Committee next Thursday. And, um, we, when we discussed it at the, uh, pre-meeting, we found out that it was piloted by 527 Council Rock teachers primarily for generating instructional materials. And the teachers will control how the students will use AI in the classroom. And we understand this can be sensitive for some families. So that's why it's on the agenda next week. And the board will continue to discuss it if there is a need for that. Thank you.
Terrific. It's great to get some further insight. Are there any other comments or questions on the motion and the items contained? We have a second. No more comments, questions, any objections? All right, hearing none. Well, please record that as passing unanimously, Madam Secretary. And that moves us on to public comment. There are five people signed up to comment. Again, this is for non-item, non-agenda items, or if you wish to comment on an agenda item, you could. There are five people who signed up. Additionally, if you didn't sign up, you can comment. Public comment is an opportunity for members of the public. Excuse me. Public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board. We would ask that you limit your comments to no longer than three minutes. Please consider the fact that there may be young children in the audience or watching this broadcast live on CRTV when speaking. It's our goal to maintain a respectful environment so that members of our community have an equal opportunity to address the board without interruption. While the board welcomes your ideas and will consider them in deliberating an issue, we typically do not respond to comments or questions. So we'll begin, and it's a little difficult to read some of the handwriting, which is fine. The first person signed up, I believe, is Elena from Northampton. Welcome.
Thank you. Alana, sorry.
Alana, thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. We are at a crossroads. The indoctrination of our children has already started and we cannot sit on the sidelines anymore. The National Education Association tried scrubbing its Radical 2025 Handbook from the Internet after its 434-page manifesto was leaked on X. This document, meant to guide America's largest teachers' union, exposes a radical agenda. Erasing Jews from the Holocaust, blaming white supremacy culture for systematic racism, pushing illegal racial quotas, calling for educational reparations, and attacking homeschooling while ignoring their own failing schools and producing video of digital content explaining how guardians of transgender and non-binary students experiencing gender, gender dysphoria can advocate and qualify for a 504 plan. Children have been the victims of disinformation on social media platform without regulations. We have the duty and responsibility, not only as board members, but also parents, to not allow this to occur in our community. I hope for the sake of the future of our children and preservation of our communities that we reject without waiver these proposals in the future. The district should be focused on curriculum of math, science, English, history, and life skills, not what a national or state teachers' union seems to push and wants to deliver to the districts. Not the divide and hate that national union wants to push forward. Unions don't and should not run the district. The teachers are there to educate the students to learn these important subjects. NEA Playbook and AFC Global Ideas have no place in this district. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list. Thank you. Next on the list is Diane Marazo of Wrightstown. I hope I got that correct. Thank you.
Hi. Thank you. I've been following the recent school board meetings, including discussions on Policy 605.1, and I've looked into what happened since the new board was seated in 2023. Let me just address the decision to replace Eastburn and Gray, our solicitors for over 40 years. Who on the board made the call to hire Rudolph Clark instead? And why? What exactly was wrong with Eastburn and Gray's representation that justified their replacement? As a community member and taxpayer, I want this transparency. Since Rudolph Clark came on board, we've seen a series of concerning changes. Public speaking time is limited to only 10 people in total in a district of about 75,000 residents. Maybe you can explain that to us. There was a talk at a meeting early on about requiring speakers to state their name and address on record plus show ID to attend. This is a public school board meeting. People get doxxed all the time, especially in today's climate. In the end, it didn't happen, but who on the board thought forcing residents to disclose their addresses publicly was a good idea? Now, Policy 605.1 itself is on the table, and it's troubling. This tax reassessment will allow the district to specifically target properties. Our current solicitors have already established this policy in other districts they represent. Furthermore, Clark and Amuso's law firm gets paid to defend the district against any challenges to reassess. Rudolph Clark was the solicitor in Pensbury School District when residents sued them for violating free speech rights. We deserve better than importing those issues here. With the school board election on November 4th approaching, in honor of Charlie Kirk, R.I.P., how about a candidate debate or town hall centered on Policy 601.5? We need to hear each candidate's position. Might you support the tech, uh, the targeting of a tax grab? Who wants to keep Clark and Amuso as our solicitor? Who would rehire Eastburn and Gray? Let's also get a clear understanding on how candidates plan to spend our tax dollars. We could have the debate or town hall right here in this room because our tax dollars pay for it. What do you think? Let's remember Charlie Kirk for his passion in engaging young minds and fostering respectful debate. His ability to inspire critical thinking and conviction in students has left an lasting impact across this, across this globe. His legacy underscores the importance of open dialogue in our schools and our communities, a principle we should uphold. Let's continue his commitment to empowering the next generation with courage, contemplation, and consideration. Thank you for listening. We are looking for the transparency.
Thank you. I just want to correct the record on a couple of points. There is no limitation of 10 speakers at public comment, and we do not have a Policy 605.1. That doesn't exist. So we'll move on. And the next person signed up to speak is Fran Holler of Newtown Township. All right. Thank you. I believe it's Debbie Evangelou of Northampton Township. I pronounced your name correctly?
Yes, you did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to address an issue that was front and center two years ago during the last school board elections, and unfortunately, it has once again reared its ugly head during this past primary. And that is the accusation or implication that this board, in particular, the four school board members who currently sit in the major, in the minority, have banned books. Two years ago, this was the battle cry of the Democrat school board candidates. These candidates knew this was a false narrative but spread it anyway to incite fear and gaslight our community. So now, two years later, I would like to put this falsehood to rest once and for all so this subject will not once again be part of any Democrat school board campaigns, either individually or through their political group known as Together for Council Rock. Although it's doubtful that I will get a response, I ask this board the following questions. Number one, what books has Council Rock ever banned? Number two, in the two years since the Democrats have held the majority, what books have been put back in circulation that were previously allegedly banned by the Republican majority? I can answer these questions myself. It's zero. Further, if any books have been banned in the past two years, it would have been done by the new Democrat majority. Ms. Khan, you are Chair of the Education Committee, and to my knowledge, you have never brought up any issues regarding banning or reinstating any books in the libraries of any school in the district. Yet here we are, two years later, and an individual who I believe may be on the CREF Board, who would be closely affiliated with the district and who should know the truth that the books are not being banned in the school district, nonetheless posted on social media during this past primary season, quote, "Vote for pro-public education candidates. No banning books. Letting educators educate," unquote, and then listed by name the four Democrat school board candidates to support. Just because you keep saying something over and over doesn't make it true. There are zero facts to support this continued lie regarding book banning in Council Rock, and this community deserves the truth. It is not okay to post on social media, send emails, and distribute campaign literature calling your opponents disparaging names just because you disagree with them. And it is also definitely not okay to send out a campaign mailing with graffiti covering the face of your opponent and mischaracterizing his comments. Given the increase in political violence, this divisive behavior has to end, and we must turn down the rhetoric during this election cycle. What happened two years ago cannot happen again. We will all be watching and will hold each candidate and their surrogates accountable. School board races used to be respectful and positive, where two candidates who are neighbors would campaign on their plans to make Council Rock the best it could possibly be. The candidate with the best idea should win, not the candidate who can smear his or her opponent and stoke the most fear into the community by spreading falsehoods, misinformation, and political agendas. We need genuine candidates with respect for the office they seek and not political theater. Thank you.
We have one more person signed up. Lori Katz of Northampton Township.
When you tear out a man's tongue, you are not proving him a liar. You're telling the world that you fear what he might say. On September 10th, our nation lost Charlie Kirk to a brutal unwarranted assassination. They don't kill you because you're a racist. They call you a racist so they can justify killing you. Charlie fostered critical thinking in students through respectful debate, many times agreeing to disagree. If you lose a debate, consider the winner's position and have grace. His approach sparking reflection should be valued, not silenced. Our country is hungry for more open debate, not less. Yet too often, smear tactics like labeling somebody a racist, Nazi, or book banner are used to shut down discussion, instill fear, justify violence, and distract from what matters, academic excellence, and the direction our school, of our schools. Incidentally, one of our school board candidates even left the race after being verbally assaulted in her place of business, called a racist and a Nazi, and threatened with harm to her livelihood, simply because a patron overheard her talking about her run. Where are we as a community? Do we reward vitriol by electing people who spew lies, hate, and fear? The same voices preaching hate has no home here post hateful commentaries online in their profiles and are often the ones behind slam campaigns full of lies, gaslighting our community. In Council Rock, we've seen this before with baseless claims of book banning. I still have no definition from the district, although I do remember Dr. Seuss books being unfairly villainized when my kids were in elementary school here, and I wonder what happened to those books. We can expect the same disgusting smear tactics in this election cycle to take the eye off of recuperative education and academic excellence. I know you're looking around like you have no idea, but you do. The way a person conducts a campaign says a lot about their character. Don't fall for smears that prioritize tantrums over truth. Elections matter. Approach government, local, and national with healthy skepticism, no matter who is in office. Research all sides, have real conversations with candidates, they're accessible, and make informed decisions. Vote in person on Election Day or request an absentee ballot if you can't. America was founded on conversation and debate rooted in Judeo-Christian principles like those in Exodus 20, the Ten Commandments, which teach honor, morals, truth, and respect. Let, let's live those values. I urge Council Rock students to turn this tragedy into something good. Join the debate team and have fun with it. Start a Turning Point chapter here. Meet people, share ideas, and seek common ground. Look for things that unite us as they outnumber those that divide us. Focus on the Constitution that protects our rights and the American flag under which we all stand. Demand more debate and a community that values open minds and fearless discussion. Let's honor Charlie Kirk's legacy by fostering that spirit. Thank you.
Does anyone wish, does anyone else? Yes, please. No, that's fine. Just identify yourself, please, and the municipality where you live.
So I am Mallory Newman. I'm from Newtown Borough. I am also an employee. I always like to put that out front. I am only ever referencing anything from my own personal experiences when it comes to my children. I want to also preface this with, I have had some good response from this, but I always feel like it's more important to come to speak in person. This has to do with what Dr. Andy Senko always says at the end of every one of his messages. Please go to the CRSD website to find accurate and up-to-date information. That is not true when it comes to Newtown Middle School. So for reference, I have two children there. They are now in eighth grade. One is in the autistic support program, one is in the gifted support program. I do as much as I can to support both of my children, but when it comes to my son in the autistic support program, he still needs quite a bit of adult support. I personally cannot give him that. When the handbook is out of date at orientation, we were not given the most recent handbook for the 2025-2026 school year until after orientation on September 12th. We were not, we did not at the orientation because I always go and make sure that he knows what to expect, where all of his classrooms are, how to open his locker, X, Y, Z. They didn't have the parent meeting, which was fine. They said, hey, we're going to send you an email when we get home. I'm like, okay. Waited, 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 didn't get it, get that. Luckily, I'm an individual who always goes and talks to people, so I asked the office, hey, when's my kid's lunch? Hey, are we doing backpacks? Are we not doing backpacks? I was led to believe eighth graders were not going to be allowed to carry backpacks, which again, I know it seems like such a minute thing, but it is a very big deal for a kiddo who has executive dysfunction, organization issues, and doesn't really have a great working memory. So I put some things in place that caused some issues at the beginning of the year because, hey, guess what? We did have backpacks. So, you know, it's all these little things. If we want to best support our special needs individuals, especially at the secondary level, it could be giving the chance that parents need and the support and the information accurate and up to date. As another example, um, my son didn't remember all about the rotations of arts and da-da-da-da. It is very confusing as me as an adult. I did not go through the Council Rock system. Their arts rotations information is from the 2020 to 21 school year. We all know that year, things were not the same as it is. There is a image of something that when you try to blow it up and print it out like I do for my child, it gets extraordinarily blurry. So basically, I have an email that I sent to Tim Long. Didn't get a great response from him. I got a lovely response from Dr. Oberman. This not only will help our children in the special needs program, this also helps our general education students. I know at the secondary level, we are trying to get them on their own feet, but I can help best support that, just having some basic information when we're heading into a new school year. And what I am very concerned with, as I am looking towards ninth grade, I have been continually warned that the information gets even more of a black box and less accurate online. So please, update the website, make it accurate, even if it's exactly the same, just date it to the 2025-2026 school year or whatever subsequent year. I don't care if it's up, like, it doesn't need to change, just needs to know that it's going to be right and what to expect. So that's about it. I can forward my actual email if you would like, but Dr. Oberman already said we're going to be in contact later. I just wanted to put it out there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newman. Anyone else wish to comment? Please. Oh, I'm sorry. Are you commenting again? I, I'm a little reluctant, and you, you had your three minutes. I'll give you three minutes, but I, I don't want this to be a practice. We allocate three minutes per person in public comment. That's, that's irrelevant. That thirty minute. All right. Um, we're going to move on to board comment. If there's, I'm sorry. Does anybody else wish to comment? No? Then we'll move on to board comment. We have new business from the board. Is there old business? Mr. Roosevelt, go ahead.
Yeah, I.
Ms. Horner?
I also have new business, but Ann can go first.
Want me to go first?
Unless you want me to.
Wait a minute. I recognize Ms. Horner.
There you go.
Go first? All right. We, what are we teaching the kids? What kind of role models are we? Political violence, bullying, gaslighting, secret deals have no place in this district, ever. For the last year and a half, I've sat at this table and witnessed dishonest, non-transparent, and unethical behavior. That is not conspiracy. It is documented fact. Emails don't lie. Actions don't lie. People do. Truth, transparency, and taking accountability as elected officials is utmost important. As elected officials, we are responsible for oversight for the best interest of the district as a whole, not individual subgroups, policy development review, budget, and financial oversight with ensuring fiscal responsibility, superintendent oversight, educational program oversight, and support student achievements, not a self-personal subgroup. Compliance and legal oversight, facilities and infrastructure, community engagement and study state, commu, community engagement, student, student safety and welfare. I have personally reviewed over 1,500 documents, emails, and records connected to these events. This review makes one thing absolutely clear. Five board members allegedly acted in bad faith in secret and in violence, violation of their oath of office. Rest assured, if it was any of us four acting with an unethical, dishonest, unlawful, and lack of transparency, there would be a tax, public comments, and accountability to be enforced. We are to question our governance as well as be the oversight for this district. As elected officials, our oath requires loyalty, care, transparency, fiscal responsibility, and accountability. Under the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act, PA, 65 PA, CS 701 to 716, board deliberations and decisions must take place in public, not behind closed doors, not in private emails, Google documents, and not in Zoom meetings. The Act defines deliberation as any discussion for the purpose of making a decision, 703. Silencing and exclude, excluding board members from board business is not only unethical, it is unlawful. The Pennsylvania School Code 24 PS 1-101 also requires school directors to uphold duties of loyalty, obedience, and care. That means no subgroup favoritism, no secret deals, and no hiding information from taxpayers. By excluding four board members from key facts and by pre-deciding outcomes, it is my opinion that the five board members have breached their fiduciary duty to this district. Timeline, November 2023, before new members were sworn in, three incoming members and two sitting members began deliberating in private email. in private emails, Zoom calls, and shared Google documents about replacing the solicitor and other board business, to which could be a clear Sunshine Act violation. Unsworn members may not conduct board business, and no majority may deliberate in secret. One email of an uns sworn board member even shows acknowledging in their own words that they, quote, "know they cannot do any board agency business until they take their office", end of quote. This proves the actions were not mistakes. I have reason to believe they were knowingly, willfully breaches of fiduciary duty in the Sunshine Act. December 2023, the five board members continued those discussions. Emails confirm a solicitor was chosen in an email in November 2023 before any public vote. This concealed action was possibly a breach of fiduciary duty, a violation of duty, loyalty under the school code, and a violation of the Sunshine Act requirement of open deliberation. January 2024, at the first meeting of the year, the majority installed Rudolph and Clark as solicitor. The public and four board members were misled into believing the decision was open and recent. In fact, it had been decided over a month earlier. What financial impact has this had on Council Rock? In November 2023, an uns sworn member met with an attorney who gave her proposal of $175 an hour. Don't know who would advise an uns sworn board member to do Council Rock agency business, and how would they even know what information to ask since they are not privy to district litigations until sworn in. Rudolph and Clark's initial proposal was $195 an hour. In just the first year, Council Rock's legal costs with Clark and Musso has just up to exceeding $900,000. Eastburn and Gray never had more than $690,000 in a year for over 40 years of doing business with Council Rock. The five chose this firm after knowing there was a less expensive attorney proposal, and at least one member requested Eastburn and Gray's pay structure in an email on January 16th. January 17th, a new proposal from Clark and Musso was sent stating that they will assume the same billing structure the district had with the previous solicitor. At the meeting on January 18th, the five board members accepted and voted for Rudolph and Clark with a higher rate than initially proposed. Where is the fiscal responsibility of these board members? That is money stolen from classrooms, teachers, and taxpayers through fiduciary negligence by the five members. The majority did not issue a public request for proposals, did not interview multiple firms in open session, and did not provide justification. Mr. Clark publicly stated this was done lawfully. However, an email confirms that in November 2023, the five members had already chosen Rudolph and Clark in an email before the public vote in January 2024. Mr. Clark himself confirmed to me by email, quote, "that the law is clear that a quorum of the board should not be deliberating or deciding agency business behind closed doors." Therefore, end of quote. Therefore, a decision with five members in an email choosing a law firm is agency business constitutes a possible deliberation. And under the Sunshine Act, deliberations must occur in public. This was not transparent or a competitive process. It was a political deal, but I, what I believe, a clear breach of fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers. 24PS 2-211 and 24PS 3-318. Throughout 2024, the same five board members forced through full-day kindergarten without broad community demand, full fiscal planning, or transparent deliberation, as emails show. I have reason to believe this is a breach of fiduciary duty because they ignored the needs expressed by parents, staff, and teachers of more math literacy specialists, special education programs, smaller class sizes, for them to push a predetermined subgroup agenda to favor a community subgroup for political support that they deliberated on in emails. 65PA, CS 1102. Spring 2024. When I raised math and literacy specialists in small class needs, I was dismissed because these five wanted the administration to make it work in one year and to find, quote, "a creative way in the budget to pay for this program as their personal priority for full-day kindergarten." Again, I have reason to believe this was a subgroup favoritism and a breach of fiduciary duty to the students and taxpayers we serve. A member stated in an email to the administration to be creative in ways to pay for full-day kindergarten. Several board members publicly stated, just put it out there, let's see how things fall, make it happen in a year, students will be fine, even though this could affect the school they would attend, the sizes of classes, and the financial burden of this district. This is no way to discredit the administration, staff, teachers, actions, and work as they made this happen in the year. Kudos to you. However, the five pushed this down the district as a predetermined subgroup agenda. Spring 2025, Solicitor Musso went beyond the legal advisory role, lobbying this board in executive session for 605.1, a tax reassessment policy that could target taxpayers. Under Sunshine Act 708, executive sessions are limited to personnel, current and potential litigation, contract negotiations, and security, not lobbying for new policies. The five board members covered publicly for this solicitor. Glad I sent an email with details of the tax scheme. The five would have tried to push a policy through. Although lawful, the policy would go after taxpayers, commercial and residential, for doing nothing wrong, possibly compounding the fiduciary breach by permitting the solicitor to misuse his role. Mr. Musso knows better, as he is the so-called expert. When a right to know is received, this district and solicitor should be following the guidelines set by OOR. If known within five days, there is documentation for a request, or there is not documentation, then respond. Pushing every right to know request out 30 days adds more money to solicitor's fees and could be a waste. Enough. Stop playing with the districts to pad the money of the solicitors. We cannot ignore the financial and ethical consequences. In Solvage v. Department of Environmental Resources and in Smith v. Richmond, federal and Pennsylvania courts made clear that excluding board members from information violates governance duties. Another district has already paid $75,000 settlement for similar Sunshine Act violations. By ignoring the law, this board is exposing our district to the same liability. Let me be clear. I am here to protect students, staff, families, and taxpayers. Our duty is to them, not political donors, not to special interests, and not to personal subgroup favoritism agendas. Therefore, tonight, I'm calling for accountability. I urge the five members who orchestrated these actions to resign immediately. I'm calling for this district to issue a new transparent RFP for Solicitor Services. This district and this board deserve a solicitor they can trust, someone who represents all of us fairly, openly, and without bias, and I'm calling for us to restore integrity, transparency, and ethical governance to this district. And to be absolutely clear, this will not end tonight. All documents and evidence, which I have all right here, have it all, and many other actions of dishonesty, unethical governance, lack of transparency, and lack of fiscal responsibility, included in the 1,500 records I've reviewed, will be shared with the Pennsylvania Ethics Commission, OOR, the Court of Common Pleas, the Pennsylvania Department of Education, the Auditor General, and the publics, because they deserve true transparency. Video depositions and full discovery, including the missing emails and requested texts, will be sought, and the truth will come to light. We owe the students nothing else. They are watching us, and they deserve leaders who stand for truth, ethical, and lawful governance and accountability. Students, you see something, you say something.
Mr. Roosevelt?
That's difficult to follow. There, every year, there are different published organizations that put out ratings for different school districts. Since I came onto this board, I remember speaking with the interim superintendent about such rating systems. Recently, one has emerged, which is a pretty common one, I don't want to list it by name, and it ranks Council Rock North in the top 50, but Council Rock South in the top 75-ish. It puts Central Bucks and New Hope-Solsbury above both of the Council Rock districts. I believe this body is in place to ensure educational excellence and at times cheerlead the administration and at other times mutually and respectfully challenge the administration. This is not intended to be either one of those. I just want to put it out there. I understand that there are educational audits for both special education as well as general education, and I'm wondering if this body has ever considered conducting one. I know in my four years sitting on this board, we have spent various different education committee meetings talking about these rankings, the differences between perhaps a middle school and another middle school, or a certain high school and another certain high school. And I'm wondering if there, an educational audit is something that's been considered to help have a third set or a third-party set of eyes to look and make ways that we could make recommendations and improvements. I have advocated and indicated that having more reading specialists and math specialists would be helpful, and I think that this administration could also perform an audit amongst itself. I don't know if that cost is appropriate as additional burden to put on the district, which is why I'm wondering if we've ever considered a third-party audit and what that has done and if other districts have done similar audits. I think that both the Special Education Department could benefit from this, and possibly the gifted and the regular education should benefit from this. I understand these costs are comparatively or perhaps regular, essentially inexpensive. I don't have a way to define that. I've asked for a definition of what is inexpensive. This district has about a $300 million budget, so it's just a thought that's come across, and I wanted to put it to this body to see if this fits a creative way to improve the education. Once again, this is not intended to be an attack on this amazing administration with amazing educators and amazing students, but it might get, or perhaps somebody can inform me on why these are useless. But as I spoke to that interim superintendent years ago, it was a discussion on how these rating systems aren't applicable, and I thought that it would be interesting if we could enlighten the community and explain why these rating systems aren't accurate, why, you know, and to help them and to help prospective residents moving to this community evaluate which district is a better fit for them and their children. I believe Council Rock is a wonderful, historic, and very proud district. We sit at the top of the 500 school districts in Pennsylvania, and this request is not to tarnish or anyway say that. Instead, it is a proposed method to see, can we make it better? And I think that that's what this body is entrusted to do, is can we make this district better? So I just put that out there, that I would like to see and hear some information on why these audits are a good idea perhaps, or why they're a bad idea, that this body can deliberate and discuss. Thank you.
Anybody else? Ms. Khan?
Thank you, Mr. Tate. I guess I just wanted to state a couple things that, you know, over the course of, I'm coming up on two years of my elected term, and although everyone has their right to their opinions and thoughts and comments, you know, I find it really difficult as someone that gives a lot of, of my time away from my family, getting a sitter, and all the sacrifices I have made, to sit here constantly and be told that I'm dishonest, unethical. I've had multiple requests for RTKs. We've gone through this for the last two years. I'm not really sure there, what is happening in terms of, there's no secret deals, secret meetings.
I have all the emails.
I'm speaking, so I'd like to finish, please. I listened to your speech. In terms of speaking for myself as a board member, you know, we've done a lot of really wonderful things over the course of the last two years. When I speak to constituents, they hear the good, and they're happy about the good, and that's all I'm doing, and the work that I'm doing is moving us forward. It's not moving backwards, it's not continuing to go on this fishing expedition for something that can't be found. And I feel like not only is it a waste of our time and energy when we can be having discussions or having meetings about productive things that is about academic excellence, which I fully support, and that is the only reason I am on this board, I also wanted to state that that costs the district actually money. When our lawyers have to go in and request RTKs or go to the Office of OOR because there is constant requests for things in this fishing expedition, I'm not sure what that is doing. I don't know who that is helpful or productive in any manner. I know it does not help any single student in this child or any family in this district. In terms of policies, I can tell you, you have, sit here through every policy meeting, every board meeting, there is absolutely no way a board policy or district policy can be passed or pushed or created in secret. That is absolutely false and not possible. And as you can, as through all the board meetings that I've sat through and the policy meetings and all the committee meetings, there's a first read and a second read for these policies. We have discussion, it's all out in the public, it's recorded, you can go back and listen to them all over the course of the last two years. I just want to say that, you know, it does feel like a personal attack to sit up here and have a board member who's supposed to sit up here on this dais, we're all supposed to be doing the, you know, the same goals, initiatives, and directives for this district, for the students of the 10,500 that live in our district, including one of my very own. I just find it severely insulting and that there's absolutely no good that comes out of this. And that's it for me. Thank you.
We are oversight, remember that.
Ms. Osekic?
Thank you. I want to echo what Ms. Khan said, and I, there are a couple things that Ms. Horner brought up that really bother me. And one of them, of course, is, as Ms. Khan said, you know, we're all here to do the good work of this district, and we give a ton of our time, and we do it to move the district forward. There are no secret deals, there are no secret meetings, there never have been. Ms. Horner said that full-day kindergarten was not something the community wanted, but the survey that we provided to the community had a 75% response that families did want full-day kindergarten. So it wasn't that we were doing it for some secret initiative or some, like, hidden program. We moved the district forward by instituting full-day kindergarten. Policy 605.1 or whatever, I don't know the number because it wasn't really ever discussed. We were in an executive session, which we should not be talking about publicly. The topic was real estate, which is a valid executive session topic, and the attorney said to us, you know, some other districts have this policy that it was used if there was a difference of more than $2 million on your assessed value versus the sales price. You know, this is not something that is going to affect everyday people. It was people who their business or their home was assessed at more than $2 million difference than what it sold for, and so then it would trigger a reassessment. Now, for those of you who don't know, our district runs on taxes. You know, I mean, they fund our district, that's what we need to pay for our large budget. And yet, in that meeting, everyone, I think it was unanimous, we said, you know what? I don't know that this is something that we want to move forward right now. And that's what happened in the meeting.
You did ask.
Hold on. Hold on, hold on. We're not, Ms. Horner, we're not going to get into a debate back and forth.
Me saying, Mr. Amuso, is this something that we would need a policy about, does not mean let's make a policy about it. It was, I'm the chair of the policy committee. I was curious. Is this something that we would need to do a policy on? He said yes. We said, okay, we're not interested. And that was it. And it shouldn't have been brought up outside of executive session at all.
All right, we're not going to have.
I will say again, as the public comment said before this, repeating something at nauseam doesn't make it true. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to comment? Ms. Stone.
I don't really, I don't want to engage with a conversation with Ms. Horner. And I do agree with Tracy that just because you say something over and over again doesn't make it true. You've been saying the same things for two years. As a matter of fact, right after the election, you specifically told me that you're not going to forget how things were lied about you during that election. And you have been acting with vengeance as opposed to taking all of that great energy that you have and doing something positive. You have been disruptive for two years at every turn. I'm not having a conversation with you. I'm making my statement. So it's very difficult to have a productive conversation with someone that's constantly combative and committed to arguing and committed to disrupting this board. When you talk about, we've had, we've voted over and over on many topics, not all five, four. We've voted on many topics where, I'm not having a, it's my turn to speak. So we've had many votes on many issues that have been bipartisan, if you want to say. And that's how we've been able to move forward. And part of your responsibility on the board, okay, is to, when a decision is made by the board after we vote, as a board member, you are to be committed to follow through with that action. That is part of our job on the board. When we make a decision and we all vote and we all have a voice, that is what we're supposed to move forward constructively, not destructively. And the last thing I want to say is, great idea, Mike, to look at, you know, reassess as we should be doing all the time as part of our education committee meetings. Because we have been acting in a very positive way. We've gotten a lot of things accomplished, but we have this, we have Ms. Horner that continually is disruptive every couple of months. She brings same old stuff up and go right ahead and do that. I wish, though, that you would take that great energy that you have and take that energy and put it towards positive and not negative. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Mr. Hickey.
Everybody seems to be weighing in on this, so I'll just give a couple comments. I really haven't spoken about our solicitor since, I guess, early of 2024. I've made my points known, what I thought happened, and how the lack of transparency was there, how there was an email welcoming the new solicitor, you know, before the election. But that's neither here nor there. My opinion on that is, as Ms. Horner said, she appears to be taking this further as and the truth will come out one way or other as to exactly what happened or didn't happen as far as that's concerned. Like you said, you know, I've made my peace with this. I knew a year and a half ago that talking about it every month wasn't going to do me any good. So like I said, we'll, we'll see where this leads. And if it leads somewhere, it does, and if it doesn't, it doesn't. And also, I would like to also second Mr. Roosevelt's idea of the audit, especially as you mentioned before about the increase and the 17% of special education. I do think it's not a bad idea to look at what we do, find out what we do good, and where we need improvement. Like you said, it's not a condemnation of anything. It's a way of trying to push the district forward to try to make us the best district that we can be. So I would be wholeheartedly in favor of something like that, that maybe we could discuss it as at a future education committee, you know, to have some type of independent audit of where we do good and where we could use improvement. And we'll go from, oh, one other item that I will mention, though. Back in July, we talked about sending, and we did, we sent like a letter to our federal representatives about a logjam and money that we weren't receiving. I believe it was like $240,000. Mr. Rapp, would you, I'll ask you, any idea how much money that the state gives us every year?
How much money?
Right. A ballpark figure.
So last year, we received $64,546,022.76 from the state.
And so, and we're currently at an impasse. The state has not passed a budget, correct?
Correct.
So how much money have, have we gotten any money from the state so far this year?
Not much.
Okay, not much. So we made this big stink and talked for hours and hours about $243,000. And believe me, that's a lot of money, and, you know, yet we're being withheld millions of dollars from the state, and we haven't done a thing. I mean, I think, you know, maybe we should redraft that letter that we wrote to our federal representatives and send it to our state representatives, you know, especially the ones that are holding up the works out there in Harrisburg. Like you said, in the meantime, we're missing out on a lot of money that could be used to educate our kids. So if you would like to redraft that letter, Mr. Tate, that we have, and just maybe address it to, you know, Senator Warren, Santa Sierra, Ms. Marcel, whoever may be involved, I think, I think we should based on what we did before and how now we have no, we have inactivity. Thank you.
Ms. Osaki.
I was just going to comment quickly that I also agree with Mr. Roosevelt that we should, I would support a special ed audit, a literacy audit, you know, any of these areas where we think that we either need improvement or could benefit from a third, another set of eyes. And I also very much agree with Mr. Hickey. Being at the IU meeting on Tuesday, so Council Rock is a little different because we, of course, receive our money through taxes, local taxes. We have, we have some cushion here to get us through until they pass the budget. Now, I do think we should write a letter. I think that's a good idea. At the IU, they don't have local taxes, and it's a real pickle about how they're going to fund their operations until the state passes a budget. So absolutely. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to comment? Pardon me? I'll recognize you for Old Business in a moment. I want to comment very briefly. I think when it comes to board comment or public comment, the right thing to do is to avoid what's referred to as ad hominem attacks. I don't think it's necessary to single a person out to make a point about the way we conduct our business. I think the point can be made without calling out another person by name. I think doing that just raises the temperature of the discussion unnecessarily. I think it's, it's not collegial. That's putting it too mildly. It's really, well, we're in a school district. It's not modeling the kind of behavior we want to see in our schools. So you can make a point, and you can make a point strongly without calling out any individual by name. You can say, this action was wrong. I disagree with this point. I think we ought to be doing this. And you can do it without calling out a board colleague or a board member or anyone else by name. And I really encourage people to try to keep that in mind. Number two, it is not truthful to state that five board members met outside of a public meeting in violation of sunshine law. I can say that in the 10-plus years I've been on the board, we have been very conscious, we have been educated by our legal counsel to be very considerate and mindful of state law that prohibits five board members or more to meet outside of a public meeting, and that doesn't happen. So it's untruthful to say that has happened. And the last thing I'll say is that I am confident that I personally have never engaged in unethical, immoral, or illegal activity. I highly resent the statement that members of this board have behaved in that fashion. I haven't seen it. I don't think it's happened, and I'm confident that my own personal behavior has never violated those kinds of standards. And I hope we vented tonight. I hope we vented, got something off our chests, and I hope we don't have to repeat this kind of back and forth again. I think we're better than this, and I'd like to see us move forward. Is there any other comment from the board under new business? Then we're at old business. Mr. Roosevelt. Thank you. Old business. At the July 17 meeting, I was drawing a contrast between the amount of time that this body spent discussing a resolution. This body spent approximately 83 and a half minutes from about 41:26 to 2:05 discussing and setting a precedent of setting a letter for funding that was not denied, not refused, but being held for extra review. The June 19 meeting was the meeting that we set a budget for about approximately $300 million, including a $6 million deficit. I believe it's 6.5, Mr. Rapp, but it's not material. And drawing a contrast between the amount of time that this body spent talking about $300 million with $6 million deficit versus $243,000, which both are a lot of money. So the June 19 meeting, item DD, was discussed, which was the final budget, from about 1:05 to about 1:32, or about 27 minutes. That does contrast between the 83 and a half minutes that was spent talking about $243,000. It's important to go through this, but I agree, Mr. Tate, we need to be able to bring this body together in a way. We spoke about that this past December. I offered some suggestions. We met for breakfast. I still hold those feelings. Unfortunately, the May 15 meeting was when this body approved the preliminary final budget. And in that meeting, we discussed item 60 for about 46 minutes. And if you combine 46 to 27 together, they still don't really equal the 83 and a half. I think that this body should benefit from this contrast that I was trying to illuminate, and we should spend more time focusing on the business of this board. Thank you. Ms. Polly.
I just want to say that when we set the budget, what we discussed during the board meeting is almost like a summary because we spent so many hours in finance committee meetings and in extra finance committee meetings. So it's not fair to say we spent like, I don't know how many minutes discussing in board. Maybe we should go back and check and see how many actual hours we spent discussing this in finance committee meetings. So, and I agree, and I heard at the last board meeting, I heard everybody to contact our representatives at the state and make sure that the budget is passed because we'll probably receive the money at some point, but we're losing interest because the board or this district takes the money and puts it into different investment vehicles, and we made, I don't know how many, $5 million last year, Mr. Rapp, I don't remember. So we are definitely, you know, even if we get the money late, we're losing. So we should definitely, and we, again, I heard at the last meeting that we should do that. So I think we are on the same page here. And I agree, we need to figure out a way to work together and to put the differences aside. And by the way, the old before discussion, it was not new business. That was very old business. That business has been going on forever, and every few months, it pops up. And again, I do not want to talk about this anymore. We've discussed it so many times. There's no wrongdoing. We are not unethical. We are all here for a common good, and let's find a way to work together because this is not going to help if we are destructive and try to point the finger at each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Polly. Anyone else? All right. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.